Good morning again. Maggie says that she has the cameras going and I just wanted you to know that we have the cameras going because this is being recorded so that anybody that isn't here will have it will be on the website. Maggie, where are you? There you are. See Maggie back there? Maggie came on board in our parish and as a result, she's very tech savvy and she's in the office of communications and tries in all kinds of ways to get the information out about our parish. She is the one who really also set up live feed for mass. Okay, just before I begin, anybody here that's been on our parish within the last three months, put up your hand. One, two, three. Anybody six months? Okay, anybody a year? More. Okay, anybody even Beacon Gary put up his hand. Let me say welcome to you. I love our parish and this word has gone out to come and listen, not to listen to us, but let's listen to each other to see something like this. Listening to God is an act of hopeful expectation. Listening to God requires an open heart. Listening to God requires us to set aside our personal preferences and agendas. So let us pray for the Holy Spirit to come upon us. Oh God our Father, after you, your son left, the disciples were very confused, not sure where they were going or what was going to happen or whether they'd be sufficient. And you stayed with them 40 days, showing yourself to them, disappearing, coming back. And then you told them to go and wait, that something was going to happen to them done by God that would change them so that they would be like him. So we ask you to look kindly on us who have been walking a long journey long before me in this parish of St. Francis of Assisi. Bless all those people come before us who have handed on to us a new commission to make your name known. Send your Holy Spirit upon us so that in being here, we may not even notice, but that your spirit has come down upon us to do a new work even better than it has been done. And we pray prayer to the Father that Jesus taught us. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. I've got lots of notes here. Just the little flyer that we send out to you. I'll talk about the change in the culture of our parish since I came here as pastor, the last two steps of mission and sustainability, living a consecrated sanctuary, and then listen to your comments. Anyway, that's kind of technical. I'm going on my seventh year as pastor of St. Francis of Assisi. Oh, at least one anyway. Yeah, there's one in every crowd. I just want to know that I love our parish. When I came, I had no agenda. The bishop called me. I didn't know anything about St. Francis of Assisi Parish, anything, except that you had a fabulous Knights Columbus and a terrific CCW. That's what I was told. Nobody told me anything about who you are, what you do, or how you are, or whatever. The bishop just came to me and this is what he said. "I want you to do at St. Francis of Assisi what you did at St. Mary's and what you did at All Saints." Now, I have no idea what I did. I really don't. Except that I've been amazed at what happened while I was there. I was at St. Mary's for 13 years and I was at All Saints for 12. St. Mary's had a school and over 1,000 families. It had buildings that were falling apart. It had a divided parish. And he asked me to be pastor. That was Bishop Curtis, Archbishop Curtis. And then I was sent to All Saints. It had 3,000 parishioners, families. It was in debt up to its ears. In both parishes, I left with no debt. I left with... I didn't ask for a penny the whole time I was there. Something happened. People came together. They began to say, "What do we need to really come together and grow?" And out of that came town hall meetings and that's why I liked them. And when I came to this parish, St. Francis of Assisi, I remember so well because it almost was identified something about the characteristic of our parish. I got a knock on the door about 2:00 in the morning and it was Becky Bishop. And Becky said, "Father, Kay Evans' husband just died. Could you come?" And of course, I did. It was unbelievably special. Sometime, very shortly, even before that, my experience of St. Francis of Assisi, I was walking through the hospital down in Cedar Bluff and somebody told me that John Ranger's son had died. And I said, "Oh, where is he?" "Park West." I wouldn't go. And I went down there and I met parishioners who were grieving. And I sat with them and it was a tremendous moment. My first mass here in the parish on a Sunday. The other lovely experience was my sister was there because she came from Indiana because she didn't want me to feel lonely in my new parish. And I want you to know that I have never felt lonely in this parish. Since coming, something like over 200 families have died and I had their funerals. And you can't be among 200 people who have lost loved ones, but you learn who they are, what they're going through. It's something very special associated with our parish. We are elderly. We are retired. There are no children in our parish. We're a very, very special dynamic and we have real needs. Most of you come from far away and don't know anybody when you come. We need each other and it's one of the things that really happened to me while I was here is getting to know you. I put a commission on myself ever since I was this, that my job as a pastor is to love my parish and to love each one in it. It's not an organization that you have to lead or whatever, but rather you get to know, they get to know you, and we walk together and hope with each other. But before I even get to where I'm going, I want to say a very, very special thank you to those of you who are here, that were here before I came. I came into a parish where people were very involved and yet at the same time, they were in need. They were in need because how the diocese in many ways saw our parish was that they're elderly and they send us good priests who want to serve. And they served in a very beautiful way. I believe each one desiring to serve. And one of the things that happened just before I came was, I think, the building of the new sanctuary that I absolutely love and love to say mass. And there was a coming together because there were funds there and people were wondering how to build those funds and the decision was made what to do with pulling us together as a parish and changing maybe some of the dynamics in the sanctuary. I know that that was hard work, going out to homes and families to fundraise and asking people to contribute. And it came and then when it surfaced to be whatever it was and there was hopes in the parish for, "I hope we can do this. We need this and we need that." And the first thing that came among us because it seems that there would be all kinds of different ideas and we were told, "No, that's not the direction I want you to go in." It was very, very difficult. I know it was long before I came. I didn't know about it and I wasn't told about it, but I felt it when I came. And being told no, what we did was we roughly had a town hall meeting, but before that town hall meeting was happening, there was other dynamics going on in the parish that I believe I have benefited greatly from. And that was people asking, "Who do we want to be as a parish? What should identify us? How do we go forward?" And I just want to say a very special thank you to Joe Sugar, David Bain, Fred Holtz, Rowley. They were looking at our parish and after a town hall meeting and we expressed our needs that really what we need right now from something that came out of this was we need space. We need space to meet. We need space to be with each other. We need to learn. We need to have classrooms. We need to teach. We need to worship. I remember Jack saying to me, "What I want really in our parish is to be the best place to worship at Fairbridge Lane." I remember that. So it was just a great concise thing. But what was also going before the needs and how we would address them, there was also another group at the parish that happened before I came here. And it was people gathering to center around Jesus. I don't know Kathy, I just want to acknowledge the tremendous effort that was going on at that time, quietly, powerfully gathering people together to discuss Jesus, to read the scriptures, and primarily to share with each other this faith that is ours. Not just so that we would grow in knowledge, but that somehow or another we would meet the commission of Jesus. Our purpose for being is not just simply to be with each other, but that we would be so filled with the mission of Jesus given to those disciples that Jesus had prayed for the coming of the Holy Spirit. And that that was going on and it was affecting the people in our parish, one-on-one. And I believe it was very, very powerful. Also, what was happening at that time was the recognition, "We can't do this, so what do we need and do it?" And the names that I mentioned there with regard to meeting the needs of classroom and space and gathering and everything was, "It's hard to believe. We can't do this. We don't have enough to do that. Let's take what we have and see if we can rearrange it in such a way to accommodate." And many of you who are new or maybe weren't there during that period of time, but I was in the middle of it. And I loved what I was seeing. I loved what I was hearing. I went to every cockfight that was around because I wanted to know. It didn't matter to me that somebody was upset with this because they got the opportunity to at least express it. I heard it. I didn't know all the answers, but these people here set up for us ways of utilizing their skills. David as an architect, Fred as an engineer, Joe as just a dynamic doer, Rowley as a building expert. And they took classrooms that we had here. They rearranged bathrooms. They took the buildings that were down there, which were the parish offices, and they rearranged them in such a way that somehow or another, when people would come, the offices would not be simply a place where everything went out from there, but rather they became servants of the, I was going to say committees. But we changed the culture by changing what we do as ministries and not as committees. Committees are cold. Ministries are, "Who are we serving? What is it that we really need to accomplish? Is it serving the Kingdom of Gotham?" All of those things came into play. And slowly but surely, I believe, we began to change the culture in our parish. We dismissed, okay, it happened really before I came, dismissed the parish council, which was the way of operating and doing. People had committees. They served on those. They brought that information to the meetings. And my experience when I came here is that there was terrific work being done in our parish. But it was also, I would say, silos, terrific work being done, but not everybody was on the same page about whether this is a whole parish working or just the committee that was involved. And in dismissing the parish council, we set up a new structure. We said, "Okay, the committees will become ministries and we will call it All Hands." So that when we would gather to discuss the needs or whether they're being addressed and how do they fit and making sure that calendars were not crisscrossing and going all over the place, that we would listen to each other, hear what each other needed, find out how it is that we were going to... It was very, very, very hard work. Very hard work. And even the parish had to become involved. And some of the little themes that we came up with at that time is,[1174.64][1175.42]"Are we a welcoming parish?" And people automatically said, "Yeah, we're a very welcoming parish. This is a great place to be." And yet, people who were coming would find it very difficult somehow to be noticed, to be recognized. It was almost on the parishioner to come out and and the visitor or the new person had to make their way to what it is because we found a comfort zone in being with each other and with the people that we knew, et cetera. And so we set up to say, "Look, we need to be hospitable. We need to recognize people. I know I do it. It comes probably with this, but automatically if I spot a new person, I'm on them like dogs on whatever and I don't know, bees on honey, whatever." Why? Because I do it and what I tried to do is give people permission to actually do this, to begin on a very small level of how are we going to arrive at being disciples of Jesus? How are we going to arrive at that? And it was on very basic things of setting up hospitality, recognizing each other as a family, giving each other permission to go out and say, "Oh, I'm glad you're here. I see you're new. Could you work for this group?" No, 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 no. To become friends, to talk to each other. And part of the reason we set up little rooms is that we would begin to meet in small groups. Small groups. This is one of the things that was working very powerfully before I came in our parish. And I remember that. But the whole parish doing it and whatever, it was very, very small things with areas on our liturgy that somehow or another, "This is the singingest parish that you could ever come to." And any of the parishes that I've ever been in, oh, they had great music ministries, et cetera, et cetera. But with the people singing? No. Here, we became ownership. We began to talk to each other. Events started to happen and I would say something like, I think there's 39 to 40 ministries that are very, very active in our parish. That doesn't mean, and please don't misunderstand me, I believe that was going on before I came here. Great work was being done. But together as a faith community, all the time, keeping that in mind, we began to sit down together and what is it that we need? And we found that, I remember, what's his name? I remember him coming to me and saying, "Father, you have no idea how gnarly so many people are in our parish." I said, "What do you mean?" "Well, you know, they're active and then they become elderly and we forget about them." Don't get me wrong. It's not that we forget about them. They fall away. And people began to know that and see that and set up new ministries where they would go out and train themselves, be trained, how to meet them, how to greet them, how to serve them. The Eucharistic ministers do it and they go, but it's always coming around to Jesus. After a couple of years, because of what was coming out from Rome, from our Holy Father Pope Francis, when he was asking us to kind of look at each other from four points of view, to see each other as participants, communion, have a mission, and then look at it and see, "How can we sustain this? How can we keep it going even after somebody else leaves and whatever?" But participation wasn't, "We got to get everybody involved and showing up like the town hall meeting." This is a way of looking at participation. But what the Holy Father was asking us to do is, "How are we actually participating in the life of Jesus?" That whatever we do, we mustn't just simply assume, "It is good work. Is it being motivated by the life of Jesus living within us?" And we began by kind of saying, "Yes, we just have to meet each other on a very normal level and learn and do what Jesus did." Where he had the apostles. They wear who they wear. They didn't understand him, but he stayed with them and he coaxed them. And we began to look at that kind of participation. Is that what we're doing with each other? And we met and we gathered and he said, "What I really want you to do is listen to each other." Because the direction of churches in the past has been theological. "We got us here. We teach the faith, but all our faith is going away. People are leaving." And said, "How do we become friends with each other, encouraging each other to delve into what it is that we're doing?" The other thing was communion. And it wasn't, "Let's go to communion because Jesus is present on the altar." But rather, "Because Jesus is present in the altar, we are one." I preached a sermon yesterday on Sunday, by the way. One person came up to me and said, "Father, that was the best sermon I ever heard in my life." And I was glad. I know by reputation of sermons. What drives me, what drives me is the transformation that took place in me on my journey in 59 years as priest. I belonged to the Catholic Church and even in my education, it was church. And I don't mean this is a, it's just an observation. Church was, and the Catholic Church was the dynamic that moved me. And I learned my theology and I learned what it is that we believe and I was taught really try to how express it. And I remember one time, I think I told you this story before. I remember one time I was in a place, I had no confidence as a priest and I was very afraid. I knew my theology, but how to teach it in such a way that it would touch people's lives where they are, I didn't. And there was a man used to come to Mass. I preached to Jesus that he never sent me to Athens, Georgia because it was a university city. It was intellectual. It was, it was a wonderful city actually. But the man sitting in front of me every Sunday was the professor of theology, scripture, and philosophy. And I would be there and I would die a thousand deaths because I had congregation out there who had family and children and experienced death and experienced loss and experienced sickness. And what do I know? And I knew that I didn't know. What that was, my brothers and sisters knew because they were living it. I was living it as a priest, supposing to know it. And I remember he knocked on my door one day and I said, "Oh my God, I have nothing to say to this man. Why would he be coming to see me?" And to cut a long story short, he sat down and he said, "Michael..." He wouldn't call me Father Michael. He was a professor. But just notice this priest called to lead a parish who doesn't know people in their brokenness because that's what the gospel is about, good news. And he said, "Michael, we can buy and sell you in philosophy, theology, and scripture. We're not interested. We just want to know, 'Do you believe in Jesus?'" It changed my life because I can promise you that when I come to a pulpit now, you might think I wing it. I don't. I go into my soul and I read the scriptures and I'm looking for Jesus and I can't find him. And if I can't, how can you? And I knew that before I would go there, whatever would be out of me would have to be, have to be authentic, real, genuine, at least to me, at least to me. Not as somebody lording it over, but rather somebody learning, beginning. I don't know whether you know this about me or not. Many of you don't, but I had to leave the priesthood. Why? Because just like people in life, my life broke down in relationships. And how do I deal with them? And how do I deal with them? I was never taught. I was taught here. How do you fall in love when you're a priest? And what do you do when you do and you catch up with the car like the dog? It's so painful. And I fell. And I had to go and rearrange my life with people who would allow me to be me, to be me. Not to get me from here to there, but to be with me in the experience of not knowing where to go. Because that's what church has to be. And I did, it was, I worked on the building sites in Chicago because I lost my job. I lost my family. I lost my friends. Not that they didn't want to be friends with me and help me, but I didn't know how to let them in to where I was. I was a scandal. And, but I was a good man. And my church is full of people like that. That's who we are. That, oh, yeah, we can come and Jesus is there and whatever. But people need each other to walk with each other, to befriend each other. We come up with a term and, what do you call it? Evangelization, what do we call it? Rational, relational evangelization. Where we have these classrooms and out of, out of it, in a sense, one of the lovely things that has happened just recently is, is men of our parish are coming at seven o'clock in the morning and going into these rooms to read the scriptures for the next mass. And as they do it, they're not talking about the scriptures in the next mass. They're talking about what the scriptures are doing to them. Maybe exposing them, showing them their neediness, showing them all of these kinds of things. It's happening in many of the teachings that go on in whatever. And we're coming to this point now that this town hall meeting for me is, what are the needs of our parish? And what do we have to do to somehow sustain the addressing of those needs? And here you are. This is just my thing, one of the little things that I just want to tell you about when that period of time came and David Bain and those wonderful people who worked tirelessly to wonder what space is and what we can do and came up with a plan. And then COVID came. And when COVID came, we were all ready to go, but prices soared. And that's what we had come together to bring. And I remember them coming to me. And I was ready to go. Wherever it was, they said, we were ready to go. And this, Father, we don't think we should do this. And to listen and to let go of all those fabulous plans that they had spent tireless hours working on and in humility to accept that somehow or another, God was doing this to us for now. And one of the things that we were doing here in our sanctuary, our beautiful sanctuary here, I didn't know it. But I somehow was told that the sanctuary had never been consecrated. And that was oftentimes a rationale, because we needed space to gather. We would go out to the community. We would do things in the sanctuary that were very special, but wouldn't necessarily be very sacred. It was recognized. And then, one of the deep desires in my heart is when I found out it is consecrated. I think we have to continue doing what we're doing. But how do we bring this space into a space that is dedicated and holy just for the presence of God? And they talked about dividing this and doing that and whatever. And it came up at that time that we can't do anything with this building. Add to it, subtract from it. We can't do anything unless everything is, what do you call it, sprinklers. And that that before we start, it will cost $500,000 before we do anything. And so what that brought up is, this parish is a sacred space, not the buildings, but you. And setting aside a building that would somehow or another accommodate very things that we're doing here is, I believe, where we are today. And I'm just going to leave it at that. I have notes here going on my head. But just know that I love you. Just know that I think of you morning, noon, and night. I do, I am available 24 hours a day, every day. My buddy priest friend said to me, Fairfield Clay, how's the golf? It was fabulous for the first three years. But for the last four years, this place is hopping. And I try to be there for that, whether it's, and one of the lovely things we have here, because as far as who we are, is funerals. Is to bring them down to people belonging to each other, because these are our people. And we've lost them. And it's Jesus in the middle of them. And bringing that whole experience, that's the only reason I'm here, is about Jesus and about leading us to Jesus. And I would just like to start there. If there's anything else that... Oh, one thing that I got a call yesterday from the diocese. It was Father, Deacon, what's his name? Joe Bell and Jim Bell. And he said, Father, do you need a deacon?
We have one.
I didn't know about this, Deacon Gary, okay? But it was, I said, oh, God, what's Deacon Gary doing? Is he leaving? Because that goes on inside me. Anyway, I didn't call him back. And he said, no, I have good news for you, but it's up to you. There is a deacon. He's coming from Florida. He's going to be settling here in Fairfield Clay. And he was asked, told that the St. Alphonsus and this here, check them out. He says, I've already been to St. Francis. That's where I want to be. And I see that as a beautiful sign on the horizon of new outreach to support what it is that we are doing here in the parish. And I just wanted to tell you that as a lovely piece of good news. Okay, where do we go from here? Just on, anybody got any comments?
Do you have the name of the deacon?
Yes, thank you, thank you. I wrote it down. Thanks for asking. Deacon Paul Bonfanti. Deacon Paul Bonfanti. I think he's here already. I don't know whether he's a house or whatever. Somebody else? Yes, yes. How long have you been here? What's your name?
My name is Suzie. And I've been here three months from California.
Hold on a second. Somebody has a microphone. Thank you, Suzie.
My name is Suzie. And I've been... My name is Suzie. And I am from California.
Real close, real close.
Three months. And I was afraid to come to this church because I came from a very large church that had a very active community. It was a school, so there were children. There was a rock band, a rock mass. I mean, it was really, really, a very wonderful church. And I thought, how am I going to replace that? So I was afraid to come here. So I came one Sunday. And Father Mike was officiating. And I said, this is the place for me. I was very active in the bereavement committee or ministry. And I don't know how that would fit in in this parish. I know you have a Stevens, the Stevens ministry, but I don't think it's kind of the same that we used to have.
Okay, just, we'll just take it down right now. I'm not going to reassure you that we have a Greek ministry or anything. I just, I'm delighted that you're coming with that gift. Anybody else?
Father, does that mean I have permission to do a rock band?
You need to have a guitar. I danced the other day. Yeah. This parish, by the way, is chock-a-block full to the gills with very talented, gifted people. Yes. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead.
We didn't think you were moving the piano.
Another thing that you need to know, I have never, since I came here, asked you for money, ever, except on behalf of the bishop. And the other time was on behalf of you to see if you would be interested in the icon of our Blessed Mother Mary. And the outpouring of that from you was unbelievable. The other little thing I want to tell you is, never asked you for money. But in the history of our parish, we've had a wonderful man at the helm, Joe Nana. And he will trace in the last seven years the income that has poured into this parish out of generosity. The ministries that have gone in and reaching out to people to serve each other in the name of Jesus has been fantastic.
Hi. Father, I was supposed to talk about history. The saw is, if you don't, aren't a student of history, you're bound to compete, to repeat all the sins of your ancestry. So. And Father did a lot about the history, but when we, what happened, the reason we did a facilities thing, it was about May timeframe. And we were in our Operation Council meeting. And Father asked the questions. You know, we did a lot on building and designs and stuff. You know, where is all that stuff and what's being done with it? And not knowing that, that I was going to try to get out of parish life a little bit, I raised my hand and said, well, I'll put together a study and a group of people to look at what the needs are. Not, not solutions to needs, but what the needs are. And when I was preparing for that, I was digging through papers. And I found the results of the needs analysis that we did nine years ago before Father came. And pulled it out and said, wow, deja vu all over again. We've done one of these needs study and it hasn't changed a whole lot. At that time, the number one need was fix the bathrooms. And I know Casey's wife beating her up that we need to fix the bathrooms again. When the bishop was here to tell us no on the building things we wanted to do, he visited those and said, you guys need to fix the bathrooms. So the number one priority in that needs analysis was fix the bathrooms. And if Joe Sugar was here, he would know that we've done that like three times over and over to meet needs. And I understand there's another crying need in that area. So that was, that was our first need. Our second need to look at was a large gathering space. We looked at Cheyenne Hall and visited most of the other churches in the Glade. One of our objectives then was to be a school to build saints. And when we looked at being a school to build saints and what resources do we have? We basically had an amphitheater, which is the sanctuary and the masses, was preached at the masses, and a social hall. And we were concerned about, you know, one of the options kind of things was, you know, divide the social hall up and make it smaller. But we said, you know, we really do need a large gathering space. And we need to kind of keep it, keep it in. We don't need to make it bigger. We could leave it like it is. At that time, the population of the parish was 490 families. And it had been very flat for about three years at that level. We had no ideas that we would have, you know, any, any large growth. Because the way we are as a parish, we lose between 30 and 50 families a year, either with people passing or not being able to live here any longer and having to go home to their family. So when we stayed flat at 490 at that time, it meant we were getting 50 new families a year. Because that's about how many we were having to replace. And we, so we said, if we could leave, leave the hall like it is and not encroach on the space in anything we were doing relative to classrooms or meeting rooms, then that would be adequate. We thought we needed three meeting classroom spaces at that time. The definition of what we were doing were very formal education situations, not small group discussion stuff. So we thought we needed classrooms of about, that would hold about 30 people each. Our objective then was to build an area over in the behind, behind the office that would have three classroom spaces, you know, on the back of that and leave this particular space by, you know, by itself. At one time, the office was used, I don't know if you, you hadn't probably heard about it if you hadn't been here longer, been involved in it. Every time you tear something down or try to move something in this building, you find out how terribly these things were constructed. This church was built at a time in Cumberland County when there were zero codes. The parish was a band of small people who did a lot of the work themselves. So a lot of candid building, a lot of construction stuff, was parishioners getting on ladders, pounding nails. So every time we would open something up, when Joe and Fred would open something up, they would have to spend more time fixing the problems than trying to do the new things we wanted them to do. Every time, it's just universal. It's amazing. If we hadn't had them, those two guys doing the work, we would have spent probably, you know, at least a quarter, if not a half a million dollars just, you know, just stay in, just stay in the flood. I can give you one example of that. It was right when Father first got here. He took this vacation to Ireland. And a truck hit one of the utility poles out in the front. And this is all high tension line. It knocked down every telephone pole in the parish area. Not only did it do that, but the back, in the back of the utilities room back there, that's where all the power and stuff comes into the building. It ripped all of that stuff out of the wall. And it was, it was like on a Friday. People go, what do we do with Mass? And what do we do with church? And what do we do with this? And, and everything else. And so we got together with Joe Nana. And he got hold of the insurance company. And we got things straight about what kind of insurance problems we had and things we had to do that way. And then Fred and Joe got to work with on what kind of things we could do and what kind of timeframe. I'm looking at maybe three months and we're going to be down, trying to, trying to fix these things. I started, didn't want to bother Father, because that was one of my things. If you're on vacation, I don't want to bother you. So I tried to handle it myself. Called over to the diocese and they go, well, you got plenty of people. We got some, you got the insurance company. You got all that. I said, that ain't what I'm worried about. I said, that ain't what I'm worried about, you know. I got, I got a visiting priest who, who was here, and that was Father Chris, who's saying, what do I do? Where do I say masses? What do I do during the week? You know, what do I do on Sunday? And what do I do to minister to the people in the parish, not rebuild things? And it's, because we're probably going to be down. I told him, we're probably going to be down months, you know. You know, do I need to go rent someplace, you know, have Mass in the center or all of that kind of stuff going on? And I get a call from Father Michael and I go, God, they bothered you and called you. Didn't happen that. He had called into the diocese about something else and they told him about all the big problems we had here. Well, anyway, long story short on that. At the second day, the third day, we had, we were into this problem. I came into here and Fred, Fred was sitting back there and he said, I, I think I got some good news. And I said, yeah, I said, what's that? He said, I've contacted a local electrician that, that we've worked with before and he's come out here and looked at it. And we've made some calls and we think we can replace the equipment back there and get it all installed in five weeks. Went, wow. So now my job got to be not to be a huge problem for people worsening, but, but a, but a short-term problem. And sure enough, they beat that, three and a half weeks. We were, you know, we were up and running. The entire cost of doing that was something in my mind, about $37,000, not a lot, about $37,000 to, you know, to fix it all. So that's just, you know, just miracle, miracle worker stuff. And anyway, but every time they go into something, we were putting a new ceiling in here and working on sound system, and when they went into ceiling here, they found six live wires that had been cut and electricity was still in there. It's one of the places that burned down. And we're talking about how to be divided and put walls in this particular thing. When they went up, they found that all the truss in the ceiling are two-by-fours. If you build houses, you know they're two-by-eights or things like that. They, they keep the, they keep the roof up, but you can't do much with them. And when we were talking, one time, a solution about building out this particular way there to get 30 or 40 more feet to, to put a Band-Aid maybe on the problem, but if you do that, you probably have to take the roof off the building and replace a lot of the trusses just to, just to take care of the additional truss. There are a lot, lot of things in the, in the history that are like that. We wanted, you know, remodel the office and, and fix a few things. Then Father Albert was the pastor then and he decided to leave and Father Michael was coming. And we had plans to not make the Sheehan Hall bigger, but to improve it in a couple of ways. One was to replace the, the soundproof wall because it turns out it wasn't soundproof. And Rowley did all the work on that because he had done on the first one and found, we got the people in Cookeville or Nashville that could do the work so we could really, really soundproof this. And it is soundproof. I can sit in here with the dog on Sunday and if it ain't shut up there, it's quiet. You can't, you can't, you can't hear anything in there. The other thing is the sound system in here was, was totally broke. So we replaced the sound system in here and I don't think we've had major problems since then that fixed it. We fixed the sound system in the church. Rowley was doing the project from the previous fundraiser to redo the, the sanctuary and he did all of that and it's, that was a magnificent job that he did, that he did in doing that position, so we didn't have to, we didn't have to address that. So in comes Father and, so anyway, I got some people from the diocese and I said, what do I do? You know, you know, we're going to change pastors and, and I don't get any help from where I am and, you know, we got projects and I got contracts led and, you know, do I build things or do I not build things? And what I got was, you know, go ahead and do the remodeling in the bathrooms and, and do, and go ahead and, and fix Sheehan Hall, which was, replace the flooring from what we had and change the coloring we had and put all new ceiling in here and, you know, those, those kind of things. So that when we opened the door, the space would, would fit like it was part of, of the big sanctuary, would look the same. The colors in here were a yellow floor and green, and green walls, which, you know, was okay, but when you opened it up, you could go, you know, this, 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 this really doesn't fit, so it, it fit for expansion. But they said, don't do anything on the, on building the classrooms out there. So we had done architectural drawings and we've driven, we've driven some architects in the local area crazy because we do a project and they do all the work and we, and we don't do anything. And, and we've done that, we've done that several times. So we put that particular thing on hold. Father comes in and first thing he does, he wanted to review and we told him that and we, where we were and, and the building things, and he, he asked whether there are any other options. And Fred and Joe and their, and their engineering mode went and dug out all of the options that had been laid on the table in the last 17 years of things. There was one, you know, building, not, not doing anything with this, but building the church over there, building a new church on the property. There was one, one that, that, you know, build, build some stuff over the, out, out in the area there, that, that, there was one that Jim Auckland had done, that was basically to move the offices from back there and move them up front. And I said, ooh, I was hoping nobody would ever bring that up. But Father liked that one a lot and we thought that a lot of problems with our welcoming was that there wasn't any, there wasn't a good face on the building. When people came up, they couldn't find anything, they didn't, they didn't feel welcome to come in, so. But, so that's, that's the area we went down. We went down the area of moving the offices up from there up front to there and building what was three new classrooms. And then they asked Father one day, would you like the fourth classroom? And of course he said, yes. They didn't say, if you pick this option, it's going to cost another $480,000. They forgot to put that on the end of it. And they said, Father says he wants a new classroom, a fourth classroom. So our plans were for a fourth classroom to, to, to build that up. But anyway, COVID came and we were looking at a project roughly a little bit south of a billion dollars. We had about $600,000, if I'm correct, in the building fund at that time that we had left over from, from the previous fundraising and money people had put in that area. And so we had enough to start a project because requirements of the diocese is that you have half the money in the bank. So we would be able to do a 1.2 million dollar or roughly that kind of project. COVID came when we, we put everything on hold, when we met after COVID, one point, about one, less than a $1 million project became rapidly 1.6 million dollars. We talked about it and had to do some extra work with the diocese for approval and it took about four months. We revisited stuff with our contractors and we're now looking at a 1.9 million dollar solution. So, so David, David Bain is, you know, his work life was to, to do building and expansion for a large corporation, so. And he's, and he is an, he is an architect also. So he's a businessman architect and he said, you know, for that kind of money, you're not getting a bag for the buck, you know, you're not getting what you need out of that. So that's, that's why we put, put, put that project to bed. It just wasn't worth spending that kind of money for, for what we're going to do. So we put all the things on hold. So that's the history of where we came from. Anybody got any questions about that?
In marketing.
Yeah. Uh, well, I was going to get into the new part, the building part. We're now, we're now at 690, when I left. 698, see, I'm, all my, ever since I left in July now, I'm part of the mushrooms and get in the dark most of the time. About 700 families is what we worry on, on our new plan. And that's, if you look at it, that's losing, that's losing 50 a year. So in the last probably four years is when the major, the major uptick went. There was a slight uptick. Everywhere Father's men has gone, gone up a little bit. The flip side of that is when we talk a little bit about sustainability later, flip side about that, when he leaves, they go in the toilet again.
If I may just address one thing, just so you know, the bishop sends out every year to increase, you know, preferences, plans, all that sort of thing. Just want you to know that most of my, I told him, no, I will be here certainly for another year. I'm 82 years of age. I, I'm blessed with good health. I don't have any intentions of just going, going somewhere else. I, I, I listen to see what God is sending me and it's here. But when I wrote to the diocese, what I wrote about is the kind of parish, not to see us as a sleepy little place where you send a priest who's looking for to play golf and retire and whatever. It's active, it's very involved, it demands a lot. So on that question, sustainability, was letting him know that if he's sending somewhere, somebody here after I would leave, that it, it's not a sleepy little place. It's growing and very, very active.
So anyway, it used to be every year, every year, because we, we were also not in a good financial position at that particular time and it was well-hidden by the, you know, by, by the way we were doing bookkeeping. So when we did the big town hall, I told somebody earlier, a couple of years, about, you know, 10, 11 years ago when we did the town hall, it was like throwing rocks at us. We were sitting up at the front because the building, all the work they did and the money that they raised, the bishop said no, and that didn't work. And, and then the comments were, you know, you're not keeping records right, you know, you're crooks, you don't know what's going on, and I died, all of those kind of things.
I was just wondering, why, when the truck took out the electric box, why does the cost to the parish waiting as soon as I can get out of there?
What about insurance?
The insurance paid it, but that was the cost. The insurance. It was Catholic, we don't have any, we don't, we don't exist as an entity. The diocese exists as an entity. Any money we collect is, everything is the diocese's resources, everything is the diocese's money and all that stuff. So we had Catholic Mutual Insurance, so we, it wasn't a, it wasn't a charge to the parish to get it done. Probably what, 90, 90% of it was?
This is Monica. Monica is our controller.
What happened at that time, we were in a hurry to get things done so we could get back in business again. We took care of it. We, Catholic Charities re, I mean Catholic Mutual reimbursed us for that and then they got their money back from the contractor who was working on the street that caused the problems. So there was no ultimate cost to us at all for that.
So it wasn't out of our pocket, but that was just an order of magnitude. We thought that, you know, it's going to be huge, even if it was, you know, even if it was an insurance situation. We did take shortcuts and get, and get it done fast and got our, our hands slapped because we didn't get three beds and in the middle of the emergency and what did, we did emergency best cases and, and got it done.
Somebody was asking about the, the financial.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get that.
No, nobody asked that yet. It will soon, I guess.
Hi, I'm Elaine Gifford and I've been in the parish about six months. Love it, love it, love it. Everybody's wonderful. Everybody. And I was just wondering, after hearing, like there's no code stuff when the church was built and stuff, is there, was there work done on accessibility study?
What's that work done?
On accessibility study for handicapped and, you know, bathroom situation being handicapped accessible and like all the stairs we have this way and that.
Now you can see from the outside, there's been no accessibility overall study. A lot of the stuff is, is unaccessible. Only thing we've done relative to accessibility is a bathroom up front. And, and my daughter is in a wheelchair all the time, so we were pretty much the driver of making sure that everything in there is something that she could use and, and get done as a, as a model. So that's the only thing we've done relative, relative to access. None of this stuff, even that, you know, that, even that ramp up the, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't meet code.
Because I was thinking, since it's an older parish, you know, older people, that, that there should be that done.
Yeah, we, we need to take a lot of that into consideration if, you know, if we do other buildings or do new things to, to move things, how you get, it's really a problem. I don't go down the stairs anymore. I've fallen twice and, you know, I'll walk around the building before I go down the stairs again.
The, the last effort with David and drawing up all of the plans, the real urgency was that everything would be on the same floor. That was part of the plan that they, because of the accessibility.
Right.
That was part of the plan. If we go forward in needs analysis, that would be certainly one of them.
Yeah, and, and the ramp, the ramp at the back of the building was, looked like Disney, you know, since it had to do so much, this one is back, you had to go three areas because you, you know, because you can only have so much, you can only fix so much elevation and so much space, space.
In the front doors, you said when you go into any grocery store or not grocery store, but a carpet store, you have a handicap button to push where the door is open for you? There are so many people that come here with walkers and things to push that button and have the automatic door open rather than waiting until they see somebody at home on the door. Is that something to look better?
Yeah, we can look at it. I tell you, there's been no, as I told, there's been no handicap accessible study or relationship. Done as far as fixing the, fixing the whole space, but that's a really good idea. You taking that note? Okay. In addition to being controller, Monica is the one that works with prepared renovation with the crew to do that, so she's taking note. And Susan could get to her later about what she needs in the bathroom, I guess. Get her off of Casey's back. Anybody else? Yeah.
Jack, just question, you mentioned that on the previous study that you were going to add something behind the office? I'm trying to figure out where you were going to put another facility or hall or classroom. Where?
Right. Behind the office, they're going to add on to the back and go into the parking lot.
Parking lot, okay.
Right. That's been next, that option's been next to a couple of things now because accessibility, because it's very difficult, you know, you still got to go downstairs. It's a real problem getting over there. But second, we have a, we had a major drainage problem in the, in the parking lot and it was causing us a lot of problems and we spent a decent amount of money, not as big. First time Monica and I got, they proposed to us, the numbers were $300,000 to $400,000 to fix the problem and after we think it, anyway, it cost about $100,000 to, to do what they, what they've done to the parking lot to fix it and I, and we were lucky. Casey Cuback is, he's a irrigation type expert, that's what he did for a living before he came here. That's what Father said, we got great resources here to take advantage of. He's fairly happy that, that, that particular, that particular thing's fixed. He's fairly happy that it's, that, that particular, that particular thing speaks.
Is that a father man sprinklers?
No, we would have to put a sprinkler system in the whole church. And, and the problem in addition to cost is that, you know, they weren't planned in our sanctuary. And then you would have to put pipes and all that stuff. It would be very visible, it's ugly, nothing else. It would ruin, in our opinion, it would ruin the appearance of, of that sanctuary to, to put all that stuff up. And somebody in one of our meetings said, "Well, why, why don't you care, why don't you care about the safety of the people? You know, probably oughta do that for that anyway." But we have an excellent safety team here and they look at stuff. And we feel very confident with, with their capabilities that while we have lots of large numbers of people here, that they were doing a good job of keeping.
Jack, one of the happy things, I, I talked to a lot of the pastors in the area from different churches. Many of them are having great difficulty in sustainability in their churches. Ours is one of the few in Fairfield Blade that's growing. And they're envious. They look out and they see what's going on there when they go by the parking lot in the morning. But one of the questions, again, for sustainability and is, are we, right now, the way we are, are we meeting the needs, anticipated needs of our parish down the road as we go forward? Because Fairfield Blade is growing, maybe not as fast as people might think, but it is growing. And my question is, do our facilities meet the needs of, we'll say, the next five years?
Unless, unless we've talked enough about history, I need to get, I need to go ahead and get, let's talk a little bit about the, the study that we did. Had a great team. Sue represented the women of the parish mainly. And Mike Spindler represented the men of the parish. Monica represented things we needed from insurance and money and that kind of stuff. The Deacon was on for two reasons. One, for doing the sanctuary and what we had to do to consecrate it. And second part was what needs we need to generate in our space to accommodate faithful mission going forward. And Barbara Brown was there because she had been, served on a long strategic planning committee for, for the Glade and had access to numbers about planning on growth and that kind of stuff that, that would help us as, as well as other things. So we got together and met over the summertime. Our idea was to have stuff ready for a presentation in, in September. And we thought the town hall meeting in September was when we would be able to present. We'd have been dragging our feet. We were ready at that particular time to, to do our stuff. So, you know, to do a, to do a presentation. What we first looked at was Fairfield Blade and the size and growth. We know we've been growing quite a bit, as Father said. I just talked to a couple of pastors at the Council of Churches meeting the other day and they're not sustaining. Methodist Church, for the first time, had to do, you know, a reduction in their, in their size. They wouldn't, they've been able to, they lose so many families like we do and, and they've been able to keep up with that with new people and they were not able to do that. And the community church now is, is breaking even with, with the stuff. It used to be a lot worse. It used to be a lot worse here. We were losing a lot more people than we had to replace a long time ago. The Council of Churches took off, took on two projects, all, both of them spearheaded by, by people from St. Francis and Assisi. The two projects they did was Fairfield Blade Resident Services that came out of that. The idea there, the whole idea there is keep for people in Fairfield Blade to stay in their house as long as they could. So they, they do ramps, they did, they did feeding people at home and, and all of that stuff. And all the stuff from Fairfield, from the Resident Services does to keep people in their home came out of people from, from St. Francis and was through the thing. The second project they did is Good Samaritan's buildings over there were driven by, by, by the Council of Churches, starting by the Methodist Church. Losing people that wanted to stay in the Glade, which just wasn't any option or they had health problems at that time. So Lenita, who's over there now is, is a pastor, she started the study. And we studied for a couple of years and found the Good Samaritan Society up in Dakotas. And then we had to raise the money to get them to start. So we raised two point two million dollars. We had to do that in the bank before they would even commit to start the first buildings. All of that stuff was done by the Council of Churches to address the problem of people wanting to stay in Fairfield Blade but being unable to because there wasn't facilities. So Resident Services was to keep them in the home and, and Good Samaritans was to be able to have them in the facility. We found that now that what we've had in Good Samaritan is we created another population that we have to minister to. A lot of people that are in, in that area don't come back to the church building. And either they can't because they're sick or they just, or they just don't. And because we have such a wonderful streaming service that Maggie does, it's very comfortable for them to, to watch mass. And then we have people bring communion over there on Sundays as part of that, that service to walk to. So a lot of that particular area, you know, doesn't, are not, are less part of the family here activities than they used to be. We kind of need to consider as we go forward, they have good facilities over there. There's some of the things we do, we can probably take it and do it in their building would be, would be a good thing. Anyway, we looked at, at growth where we were and, and Glade, Barb. We, we were worried about explosive growth and business. Went to Jacksonville move before I moved here. And there was an area out towards Green Cove Springs. It was just a wonderful, you know, rural area when I, when I was growing up and had been there. And, and we looked out there to, you know, get a lot to work. Well, two, they had a major expansion. There's only one road that goes there. And two builders came in and built seventeen thousand houses in a four-year period. Boom, couldn't get there ever. So we were worried about explosive growth is a number one problem. Barbara went to them and from her experience found out that the Glade intention is to control the growth to four percent. And it's mainly because of infrastructure stuff. Because the new lots, the, all the lots that, you know, are sold and a lot of them aren't buildable because there's not road to access it or not access the sewer. So in order to, you know, open up a new area for building, they have to, you know, build roads and do sewers. So they're, they're gonna try, they're, they're, their plan right now strategically is to control growth in here for four years. Something may happen later with the infrastructure or whatever, but we use that as our guides to, to go in forward. So if we're gonna, we're gonna grow four percent a year and we still lose fifty families, we thought, we thought maybe we would, we would gain about twenty families or twenty-five families a years. And that means we had to get seventy-five families. Have to have seventy-five new families to, you know, grow by twenty or twenty-five. So we did those numbers thinking that then after, after a five-year period, we may be at eight hundred to eight hundred and fifty families. When we bring up families, they say, "Okay, you gotta, you gotta multiply by two point five" or something like that. You don't have to do that here. We don't have children. A lot of them are, are one person. So we found it very effective over the past bunch of years to use a multiplier of one and a half. So every family we have, we count one and a half, one and a half people to, to do that. So seven hundred families, you know, doesn't generate fourteen hundred people that we have to take care of, it generates more like eleven hundred people that we have to take care of. So that works, that works out pretty good. So we felt like there wasn't any explosive growth and we could live with those numbers. So then we looked at the sanctuary as a first problem. One, we have, we have to, if you wanna consecrate the sanctuary, we can no longer move the altar. It has to be fixed. That's one thing we didn't do when we consecrate. We thought we blessed it, but it can guarantee the research and we've done everything that's possible, that's needed to be done for that area to be considered consecrated. But you can't move the altar. We have to make the altar fixed. So there's no more Eric concerts in the church. If you do that, there's no more, there's no more the kids from Africa coming in dancing. Dance enough because the altar didn't move, that doesn't happen. So, yes.
Can you, can you come up and do your piece?
All right.
We're gonna have Deacon come up and talk about the use for the saw.
Okay. All right. We'll take a break and then, and then the Deacon will come up.